We have another meeting. This meeting is a special meeting of the Glendale City Council for February 11th, 2020. May we have roll call?
Councilmember Augie Johnny.
President.
Divine.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Garbetti.
Here.
Mayor Najari.
Here. May we have your report?
The agenda for the February 11th, 2020, special public meeting of the City Council was posted on Wednesday, February 5th, 2020, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Did I understand there was a request for priority by the Downtown Glendale Association?
Yes, sir.
Would the Montrose Association yield to their bigger brother down south for their presentation? Okay, let's go to number two then, please.
Two would be Director of Community Development regarding Greater Downtown Glendale Associations, calendar year 2019, annual report and calendar year 2020 budget for the Greater Downtown Glendale Community Benefit District, two-way motion accepting Greater Downtown Glendale Association's calendar year 2019, annual report and calendar year 2020 budget.
Ms. Beers.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, we'll go directly to Ms. Horimoto, so she can move it on to Mr. Lemo and he can get to Thousand Oaks before 5:00.
Correct. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The Greater Downtown Glendale Association is a nonprofit that manages the Downtown Community Benefit District, which now spans the two blocks on Artsoc and extends on Brand between Colorado and Stalker and an increased area now on Central. In the annual report provided, you will see that DGA continues to work toward achieving their main goals of the organization, which is really to improve the downtown, attract new customers, increase sales, and increase occupancies. And with the greater district, there is more to be done. Here to provide a recap of the efforts over this past year is the President, Mr. Rick Lemo. And you should be reminded that the DGA is comprised of Board of Directors that represent different property owners throughout the district. Members of the 2020 Board are Mr. Lemo, Vice President Joseph Stiddick of Investment Property Services, Secretary Raul Porto of Porto's Bakery, Treasurer Helen McDonough of Massage Envy, Randy Stevenson of Stevenson Real Estate Services, Steve Sayers of the Glendale Galleria, myself representing the city, and the Executive Director is Marco Lamandri of New City America, who is here today, and the Operations Director is Nick Lemo. So without further ado, allow me to introduce Mr. Rick Lemo.
Mr. Lemo. President Lemo.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Before we get started, first of all, thank you very much to our friends from Montrose. Unfortunately, I have to be at a council meeting in Thousand Oaks, California, for another volunteer project. So I apologize for any problems we may have caused in scheduling. The Greater Downtown Glendale Association is pleased to again present our annual report to the Mayor and City Council. We would like to show a brief PowerPoint. Is this the thing that I... Okay. We would like to show a brief PowerPoint on some of the highlights of this past year and show you what we intend to do to move forward in the coming year. First of all, over the past year, our achievements, we began with building a tribute to women through our first annual professional Women's Day event that was held last March at CBRE headquarters on Brand Boulevard. This event was coordinated by the then DGA Board, members Helen McDonough, Jennifer Horimoto, and Nicole Dedek. We know how important this day is to the women of Glendale, and our goal is to make this an annual event praising and supporting women in their involvement throughout the San Fernando Valley. This year, we hope to award an outstanding professional. We're calling it as a working title, the Alex Award. It's actually going to be called the Alexandra, depicting the tower at the top of our Alex Theater. And that will identify an extraordinary, even though there are many extraordinary women, a particularly extraordinary woman in our community. Number two, we work closely with the city and Public Works, and I'm going to just try and... Oh, there we go. We work closely with the city and Public Works to implement Artsoc Avenue and transition into a... Transition it into a center of cultural activity, and it has already become a new entertainment venue. Though there is much to do, this joint effort of the city and the Downtown Glendale Association will strengthen Artsoc Avenue into a center of arts and culture for our entire region. And we are very, very excited about these prospects. We continue to support city events, including... Let's... Guess we're getting a little ahead of things here. We continue to support city events, including our cruise night, as well as Tech Week. In addition, we continue to be one of the largest ongoing contributors to the Alex Theater, which we believe is the anchor and the heart of our district and clearly represents a tremendous return on investment to the Downtown Glendale business owners and property owners. We are one of their major supporters, as that is how our Board has voted for the heart of the district. We worked with city staff on placemaking on Wilson at the alley behind Brand Boulevard and saw the success of creating these smaller areas that support outdoor dining in the district. Our maintenance and power washing crews, which are depicted there, our maintenance and power washing crews expanded services and holiday decor to the north and western areas based on the expansion voted on the property... Was voted on by property owners in the summer of 2018. And we try and do basically some decor changes quarterly. So you have spring, summer, winter, and fall. Actually, fall and the holidays. We worked with the city attorney and city council on the adoption of the emergency ordinance for the new sidewalk vending legislation. This represented a model of excellent and quick cooperation by the city and the DGA to ensure the health and safety concerns were implemented in our growing business district. But what's coming up for the next year? For 2020, we hope to create the following new initiatives. Working with city staff, we will install 20 new trash receptacles in the expansion area, with hopefully another 20 in the next fiscal year. That is our two-year plan. We want to continue to work with city staff on the urban forestry development along Brand Boulevard, particularly north of the 134. Our plan is to hire an intern to help us determine the number of employees working within the Downtown Glendale Association boundaries. We believe that having this number will help us and the city determine how to accommodate these thousands of employees within the next 10 years as the district continues to grow vertically. We will investigate the possibility of beginning Downtown Glendale... Actually, Greater Downtown Glendale Association-operated valet services to accommodate some of the key retail businesses along Brand Boulevard. We will continue working with Jennifer on our key bridge link project for both the western sides of the Brand Boulevard and the Central Avenue bridges. And I don't know if we've got one coming with this Artsoc.
It's at the end.
There it is.
Thank you. So you were anxiously waiting for the end, weren't you? I have to interrupt my thing to also congratulate our Man of the Year this year, Phil Landsafen. We feel that this effort will begin to break down the barrier that the 134 seems to pose to pedestrians on both sides of the district and begin to unify the downtown area. We will continue to work with the city on new placemaking opportunities to take advantage of the excellent microclimate and growing critical mass of retailers, restaurants, cultural assets, and residents in the growing downtown. We'd like to thank City Council, especially city staff, for their excellent support and sponsorship in developing our Greater Downtown Glendale Community Benefit District into one of the fastest-growing, most dynamic, most well-recognized, walkable, and beautiful business districts in the region. And I will definitely answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Quintero.
Actually, to Mr. Lemo or the staff, what do you have in mind in terms of trying to sort of beautify the bridge there?
The first... Well, let me back... Well, the first thing that we're doing, and I think there's a laser here, let's see if this is it. Okay. This is how it is now. On this side, we'll be putting in planters and bushes and greenery to start. We're going to have to see if, in addition to just evergreen type, if flowers will be there. If you look around the city, we change out our flowers seasonally. If they'll do well there, even though it's right underneath all the cars, then we'll include flowers there. That's going to be the first stop... First step. I would expect what we would hope to do as we go forward also is to provide some level of comfortable signage that lets people know what's over there and what's down here, especially with the hotels going in and out, that to sort of cause that cross traffic.
I was going to say that because of the Embassy Suites, quite often, there's really more people on Central than on Brand. People from the Hilton, I think, tend to go to Brand, but Embassy Suites is a huge hotel, and if it's not... Doesn't cost too much, you might as well do both.
I agree. That's in the district as well, yes. That is actually in the new district now, expansion. So, very good point.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, if I may, also regarding the bridge, there will have to be a lot of conversation related to the possibility of even putting planters up in that area, unfortunately, just based on Caltrans and regulations that are in place, because Caltrans owns that piece of the property. And so, we love the enthusiasm. We've had that enthusiasm in the past, but it's a renewed sense of enthusiasm that we will absolutely take and start those conversations with Caltrans and assist, of course, the DGA in doing so. And we also have some contacts by way of our mayor in terms of the ability to be able to reach some folks within Caltrans who may be able to help us. But in the past, the issues that we've had really have to do with ADA accessibility in terms of the size of the sidewalk, as well as drainage issues, et cetera. There's very specifics as it relates to a bridge, as you can imagine, in terms of a freeway. So we will assist in any way that we can.
And of course, we want to follow all of the ADA requirements. And for drainage, while it might preclude flowers, we may be able to put in some sort of evergreen. And we won't charge Caltrans anything, so that should make the negotiations much easier, don't you think, Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Lemo. I do want to say, it really is the showpiece of Glendale, I think, our downtown area. When I bring... And being frequent users of it, we sometimes are not really aware of how super-clean and super-well-maintained it is. But other friends that come in... I had an old high school friend from Cleveland come in, and he's like, "Wow." Of course, comparing it to Cleveland, I'm not sure it's... You know, that's hard to beat. But I said, "You're right." I mean, if you look around, you can't find... It's almost like being in Japan. I don't know those folks who have been to Japan. It's ultimately and superbly maintained. No garbage, no dirt, no gum. Of course, those are our ambassadors who are continually...
They are. And they do a phenomenal job.
But of course, the management as well, Gino and everyone else, making sure that it's... It's really... It's so impressive, that whole downtown area, that it's just amazing.
Well, I grew up in Cleveland, too. And right now, there's so much snow on the ground, there's...
Right. They don't have to worry about picking up the...
No, I know exactly what you mean.
So it... I mean, I continue to be wowed with what we have on Brand and now extend it to the northern parts of the district. It's really great.
Thank you very much.
Is there a motion at one... At two... Sorry.
I'm over the item.
Two A.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Augie Johnny.
Yes.
Divine.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Garbetti.
Yes.
Mayor Najari.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Let's go to one, please.
One would be Director of Community Development regarding Montrose Shopping Park Business Improvement District Annual Work Plan Budget for Calendar Year 2020, 1A Motion Accepting the Montrose Shopping Park Association 2020 Budget.
Ms. Beers.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, our other favorite place, and that would be Montrose, and Ms. Jackie Sales will give you a report on that. And we have folks from the MSPA here as well.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'm Jackie Sales, Economic Development Coordinator with the Economic Development Division, Community Development. Today, I'm here to introduce the Montrose Shopping Park Advisory Board, who was appointed the management organization for the Business Improvement District within their area. The Advisory Board consists of Andre Orubijian, he's the president, he's from Copy Network, Gigi Garcia, who's the Vice President from It Takes a Village, Ken Grayson from Grayson Toontown, he's the Treasurer, Kim Kelly from Merle Norman, she's the Secretary, Jeannie Bone from Casa Cordoba, General Board Member, and Corey Grujova from Hostelitos, he's a General Board Member as well. Annually, the Board must come before the City Council to present their budget and work plan. This past year, they had actually a very good year. It resulted in a $23,000 net increase, and that was mainly due to their filming and Harvest Market. This upcoming year, the 2020 fiscal year or calendar year, is fairly status quo at $513,000. But I'm going to introduce Dale Dawson, who is their Business Administrator, to kind of go through what their plans are for this calendar year. With that, Dale Dawson.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Dale Dawson, representing the Montrose Shopping Park Association. Yeah, we have been having a good year financially. I think our biggest struggles have been tenancy. We've had some open tenancies that have gone on for, in some cases, years. But the good news is with that, we are restaurant-strong in the Montrose Shopping Park, as you know. And in these present times, that's probably a good thing, because brick and mortar, traditional brick and mortar is getting hammered by Amazon, and buying habits have changed. So the real showpiece, I think, are what's happening with our restaurants. And we have some spectacular restaurants that win awards, like Casa Cordoba, that has won awards for the most romantic restaurant in L.A. And it really is. Others have just come online. We have two new ramen venues, Tengen Ramen and Kentsu. We have a shawarma restaurant opening up. So our job as the Montrose Shopping Park Association is to keep the perception, if not the reality, of the shopping park as a real destination for retail and for business. So our difficult tenancy spots are finally starting to show some life. We've had the corner at Montrose Avenue in Honolulu, the old Rocky Cola spot that's been quiet for almost, what, seven years now? Well, they're pouring the cement, and so that's a good sign. There were pallets of cement bags outside the place last week, and we're all very much anticipating a new business opening there. The pink pig, I heard noise in there yesterday. There's construction workers inside, so that's a good sign. These are some large spaces. And our challenge in the shopping park is that when a tenant vacates, if they've been there long-term, if it's been any kind of length of time, most of our buildings are rather large. The square footage is prohibitive for a lot of people coming in. So some have subdivided, others, we've got some good tenants coming in. So that's been the real challenge, is tenancy. In terms of attracting people to town, I'm the Events Coordinator, so I can say this. I believe we have an events calendar second to none, enviable by most. Some of the long-term activities that we have done, you'll see them here in the handout that you got. Kids and Critters is still a baby, 10th annual coming up in May. Arts and Crafts Festival, in its 37th year, is the largest two-day outdoor event in your city, and we love it. And it's going to get just better and better every year. The Car Show is in its 19th year. Film Festival, 11 years. Halloween, we don't even know how old that is, but we can't kill it. It just... They will come. Whether we advertise it or don't, 10,000 people will show up. And then our real jewel is our weekly Harvest Market and Marketplace. And we have a wonderful organic farmer's market there that's been very popular with our community every Sunday, rain or shine. And then Mr. Pierce over here, who has accompanied me today, handles our retail end of that, which is called The Marketplace. And more and more, the community is really drawn to our town on a Sunday for those venues. So our job is to keep the foot traffic coming, help the tenants to come in where they need to come in, fill the place up. We're getting to the point where we'll be very low on vacancies once again, which is good. It's been a challenge. But the MSPA works very closely with the Montrose Verdugo City Chamber of Commerce. We have a wonderful working relationship now, which has not always been the case, but it is today. So that's a good thing. And also with the Chrysanthemum Valley Chamber of Commerce, of which Mr. Pierce is the Executive Director. So we have lots of inter-community connections going on all around us, and we're all working together, so that maybe the downtown venue is the showcase, we'll be the jewel in the crown in Montrose. I think that's what Mr. Quintero used to call us years ago, Jewel in the Crown, so... In any case, I'm going to answer any questions you might have.
He still talks about the Jewel in the Crown.
I know he does. We were just talking about when his relatives come in from Spain and from Florida, the first place they want to go is...
Montrose.
Montrose Shopping Park. There you go. Any questions for me? I'm happy to walk you through anything that you might have a concern about.
Any questions on the budget, on the expenses, on the income?
I know one question was forwarded to me about the Draymond restitution income, which has dropped down to zero. Once that individual had completed five years of probation, the court-ordered restitution was no longer mandatory, so it ceased. We did have some attorneys look into the possibility of pursuing that on our own, and you'll see... Oh, let's see, where do we have it here? Under Attorney's Fees, yes. Under miscellaneous, actually. We incurred about $4,500 worth of attorney's fees trying to continue to pursue that, because clearly restitution is nowhere near what it needed to be, and no one really expected that it would.
How much remains outstanding, ballpark?
Well, from the original court-ordered, I think, and I'm just doing this from memory, I think it was about $180,000. I don't think we've taken in more than 30. It'll... It just... The way the court kept it so low was disturbing from the beginning, and we knew that that just wasn't ultimately going to go anywhere, because once the probation is done...
There's nothing...
It's over.
Nothing over him to keep that.
So that's why that budget item dropped off. Other than that, I don't think there's anything really unusual. We did have a lot of filming come through this year. We don't budget filming high so that it's a goal that we're trying to hit. What we do is try to forecast a projection that we think might happen, because we can't control the filming industry and what they do. So generally, as you see, we took in almost $60,000. We're planning it way down from there, and I hope that's down enough, because you don't... You never know with the movie industry what they're going to do. And we're changing some of our rules of impact, and that may affect how many want to come. Who knows?
Ms. Divine.
Yeah, I just wanted to know, Dale, about the promotional expenses for... There was a difference between the Spring Wine Walk and the Holiday Wine Walk of about $5,000. Is that because of more, like invitations sent out, more glasses being bought? What's the difference in the amount?
For last year or for the forecast?
I was looking at the final. They're all about $4,000, $5,000. One, like...
The Holiday Wine Walk is much more successful. Last Holiday Wine Walk, as you might recall, we oversold it. We had planned for 500 ticket sellers, ticket purchasers to come through, and we had it set up on our website for a PayPal button that you could hit and buy a ticket. And our website technician was in Big Bear on that day and had no internet, so the tickets were selling, we were up to like 643 tickets. We satisfied the customers, but we... That's a little too much. Stores ran out of food and wine and such as that. The Spring is not as dynamic, and I think that's just because of the time of the year. It's a pleasant event. Neither of those, as you can see from the P&amp;L, are really planned to be moneymakers. They're planned to be promotional vehicles. And so Spring is coming up, April 18th, and on that subject, I'd like to invite you all to be our VIP guests. Absolutely no charge, do come out. But the money that is spent against the Holiday Wine Walk is commensurate with what we expect to happen. And oftentimes, it is a matter of how many glasses were left over from last year. And so with Spring, again, we had a lot left over. We get different weather. It's... Depends on how much collateral we have on hand and how much we need to repurchase, whereas Holiday always sells out.
Well, I just want to say that in my travels in the last few months, I've been to different areas in Glendale, and they'll ask about, you know, kind of reactivating this space or that space, and they always say, "We want to be like Montrose." So that's... I think that's a compliment to all of you, and these events are fantastic. So you're all doing a great job.
And we appreciate that you're at most of them. Thank you very much. We also support the Montrose Glendale Christmas Parade. We're a platinum sponsor for that, and we host that venue, which is always fun. We are sponsor of... Co-sponsor of the Chrysanthemum Valley High School 4th of July Extravaganza, which is a donation that we make every year and are proud to do it. We also are partners with the Glendale Police Department in housing their police substation at 3808 Ocean View, which we pay all the rent and utilities for that so that they can be there. And that's a real plus for the department.
I have another question for you. I recently spoke with some Girl Scouts from Chrysanthemum Valley High School, and they mentioned that they love Montrose and the whole ambiance, but they claim that there's nothing there for them. They can't... They don't have a place where they can kind of meet and, you know, enjoy each other's company. And they mentioned an arcade. How would you feel about an arcade going in somewhere on Honolulu for them? That's something they...
When you say an arcade, how do you mean? I'm trying to picture.
They were talking about certain games that they like to play and just kind of a hangout for kids that... They don't have a Pacific Community, you know, Pacific Edison Community Recreational Center up there or anything, but they love to, you know, to come down to Montrose and just kind of have a good time. And they know that they're not wanted in the stores, because, you know, they're not actually buying anything. But they mentioned that they thought maybe an arcade would be fun, and I just wanted your opinion, not that, you know, I'm going to move towards it.
I'm not even sure an arcade is permissible within our BID zoning regulations. I think it may not be.
We're getting... Yes, we're getting... Okay.
But we do have a business in the 2200 block called Technics Academy, which would welcome anybody that wants to come in and do some of the things that are hands-on with all kinds of technical things. There's also something outside the BID, North on Ocean View, that is like a computer-based store with a light-up floor, and, you know, people can go in there and do all kinds of things. So there are some existing venues, but I think arcades are prohibited under our zone.
All right. It's good to know. I'll forward that to them. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Garbetti.
Yes, I just want to compliment you on everything you've done in Montrose and your Board, but don't tell Andre, okay? Because, yeah...
We don't want him to get the big head, I know.
No, Montrose, Honolulu especially, the entire ambiance, you can't duplicate that. It looks really nice. And my kids love Montrose. We're up there... You know, we used to go many years ago, we used to go to Pasadena to have dinner or what have you. We don't do that. We are either in Montrose or we are in downtown Glendale. We don't go anywhere else. So that's because of the hard work that you guys have done and made, created that homey feeling, that people coming in feel comfortable. It's not easy. All the merchants that you have to deal with, you know, everybody has a different need and wants and likes, and especially the lights that you left on, on the trees, the Christmas lights, the holiday lights, they look great when they're on all the time. So we like it. I just want to compliment you. I didn't want to compliment Mr. Lemo too much, but...
I know. He gets a big head, too.
Downtown Glendale looks really nice as well. So, and one thing, if I may, Mr. Mayor, it's kind of maybe not in the right order. For Downtown Glendale Association, they have $80,000 on the seasonal displays. If they can look into next year, you know, that famous, my request, year after year after year, the light tunnel that we used to have, look into it, see if he can... Has nothing to do with it, but I just wanted to... I forgot to mention it when Mr. Lemo was here, but the light tunnel is very important. I get a lot of requests on it. But you've done a great job. Thank you. Mr. Pierce is here as well.
Yes.
Thank you.
Best partner I've ever had, I'll tell you, to get things done up there. And thank you, Mr. Garbetti, for your good words. I want to also say that part of the reason we're able to do what we do is the tremendous amount of cooperation and interaction and caring interests that we get from City Council, from Jasmine Beers, from Phil Landsafen, so many people that have a heart for Montrose like we do. And they're all right here in this room, and we thank you very much.
What's going in the Rocky Cola? Are you at liberty to...
What's the name of that venue?
Gus and Andy's.
Dave.
It's a hamburger.
Gus and Andy's.
Barbecue.
Barbecue with microbrews, something like that. But we were very... Barbecue with microbrew, something like that. But we were very... Our spirits were lifted when we saw the pallets of cement outside the door. So they're getting there.
They're getting there. Great. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Dale?
I'll move the item if there are no other comments.
Second. Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agujianian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Garbetti?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Next item.
Three would be Director of Community Development regarding Cicluvia, Glendale Meets Atwater Village Open Streets Event, June 14, 2020. Three, a motion authorizing the city manager to execute all funding agreements... Excuse me. Associated with the receipt of grant funding for an open streets event with Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority, Metro, and Cicluvia. B, motion authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding between the City of Glendale and the City of Los Angeles to clarify the roles and responsibilities of each for the Cicluvia Glendale Meets Atwater Village event on June 14, 2020. C, motion authorizing the city manager to execute a professional service agreement with Cicluvia Incorporated, a California corporation, to produce the Cicluvia Glendale Meets Atwater Village event on June 14, 2020.
Ms. Beers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, before I pass this on to Ms. Sales, just wanted to say that the Metro Board awarded this contract to the City of Glendale, and we'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for pushing for this grant to come forward to the City of Glendale. Last time we had this event was in 2017, and here we are with funding for another Cicluvia, so thank you for that. With that, Ms. Sales.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I am Jackie Sales from the Economic Development Division. What we have before you today is a request for support for three authorizations required for the proposed June 14, Glendale Meets Atwater Cicluvia event. The authorizations include accepting the $241,136 Los Angeles County Metro Open Streets Grant and approving partnership agreements with Cicluvia and the City of Los Angeles. As you may recall, in 2017, the City of Glendale hosted a very successful Cicluvia event after receiving $179,520 in Metro Open Street Grants funds, and is estimated that nearly 550,000 participants had the opportunity to experience the Glendale and Atwater communities. Per council direction, in May 2019, the City of Glendale again competed for Metro's Open Streets Grant Program and was once again successful and awarded $241,136 to host another event. Again, an open streets event temporarily closes streets to vehicular traffic and only allows non-motorized modes of transportation, such as bikes, skates, scooters, and pedestrians to encourage other ways to travel and promote more civic engagement. The proposed 3.5-mile route for the June 14 event showcases Glendale's commercial districts along Glendale Avenue, Broadway, and Brand Boulevard, and connects with Los Angeles along Glendale Street in Atwater. As you see on the map, the route is mostly north-south, covering Brand Boulevard from Doran to Broadway, Broadway from Brand to Glendale Avenue, Glendale Avenue from Broadway to Cerritos, which then jogs back over to Brand, which then connects to Glendale Street within the Atwater community. Staff of Economic Development, police, and public works traffic have vetted the route and found there to be minimal impacts which can be mitigated. This route has fewer impacts than 2017 route and highlights some of the city's iconic streets and historic corridors. As in 2017, staff is requesting to partner with Cicluvia, who has a stellar reputation for producing large-scale open streets events throughout Los Angeles County. Cicluvia will be responsible for an aggressive outreach campaign where efforts will be made to reach all residents and businesses along the route, as well as Brand Boulevard Cars, the Glendale Galleria, the Americana, the Greater Downtown Glendale Association, and other stakeholders. They will coordinate traffic management along the route, working with the city's traffic division, as well as the traffic management contractor. Police will be fully responsible for the safety throughout the route. Cicluvia will again coordinate several hubs that will provide a variety of entertainment. The cost to host the event is $304,587. The grant will cover much of the expenses, leaving the city responsible for funding $63,451. Since the grant is based on reimbursement, staff included the event in the mid-year budget update, which was council-approved this past December. Therefore, staff is requesting City Council authorization to accept the Los Angeles County Metro Open Streets Grant in the amount of $241,136 and approve the partnership agreements with Cicluvia and the City of Los Angeles, by authorizing the city manager or her designee to execute agreements with each of these organizations. With this approval, it will kick off our coordination efforts, including an extensive outreach campaign. At this point, I'd like to show a quick video from our 2017 event.
We've been many times to Glendale when in our...
This is her first Cicluvia, but we love to come out on the streets in a safe way. So we really appreciate all the work that everybody does to make it possible.
I think I'm ready. I like that it's family-oriented. Everyone has a great attitude. Everyone's having a blast, and it's just a great overall experience.
That concludes my presentation. I'm available along with the Executive Director of Cicluvia, Ramel Pasquale. Any questions?
Thank you. This... I'd like to thank staff for working with Metro. This wasn't... This really wasn't ours to take, because there were other communities that were ahead of us in line that had not had a Cicluvia. There were a few tweaks we had to make to make the proposal score better, and staff from various departments came together to make that work out. It's a very super fun event. I don't think that video really shows the fun. We were all out there. We had bikes of our own, and we had Mayor Garcetti come in, music, food. And I think all of us were on the council.
I know, but that was...
You were there, and... So is there anyone here from... This was on the agenda, right? This was published?
Yes.
Anyone from Bike LA here? Bike the Vote LA?
Nope.
Glendale Environmental Coalition?
Nope.
Walk Bike Glendale? You'd think they'd be very excited about this. This is... And you'd hope that they would endorse the council's actions in such a decision, because we're opening this up and making bicycling more accessible, not just biking, but walking and skating and all that. And this is the second time Glendale and this council has voted to do that. It's a really great event. East Area Bay Area Progressives, are they here? I mean, these are all these groups that say biking is important, and they endorse certain actions and certain people that take steps to make biking more available in our community, but they're not here. I don't know why they're not here. I certainly endorse your actions if council would see fit to vote this 60-some-thousand. The rest is coming from Metro, but it's a great event. So let me start with this.
Before you... I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, this is a fantastic event. It's a family event. It's fun. It gets people moving, and it also is great for business in our city. I mean, so many of the people that are participating stop and have lunch and just enjoy our city, get to know our city better. I couldn't think of a better way to spend this tight, you know, $60,000 is, I think, an amazing amount for us to be paying for such a fantastic event. We had like 50,000, did you say, for the last one? It was so much fun. And I remember that we said that probably it would come back in a few years, a couple of years, and I thought, wow, that's so long to wait. And here it is, and it's very exciting. So thank you to staff for all the work that you did.
Mr. Garbetti?
Oh, yes, thank you. It's a great event. I was the mayor when we had the first ever Cicluvia, but of course, it would never be mentioned anywhere. And all these groups that you mentioned, they support people who have nothing... haven't done anything in the city. So that's the problem. But it's okay. That will pass, too. I want to thank the staff. I know the representative from Cicluvia is here. I want to thank you for bringing it back. I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing that $241,000 back to Glendale and fighting for it. And it's a great event, family event, and you all going to enjoy it.
And we couldn't do without Cicluvia, who came up with this idea 10 years ago? I don't know, about 10 years ago.
Yeah.
And it certainly caught on, and every community wants to have a Cicluvia, because it is such great economic development, recreation, and healthy, great for the environment. Mr. Quintero?
Yeah, it's a great idea, and I'm not surprised that other communities are looking to have this in their part of town. I pretty much participated not only in Glendale but in L.A. Once, I think we went all the way to Culver City. And like Ms. Devine says, in addition to all of the health benefits and just a lot of fun, for sure, the business community benefits 110%, primarily restaurants, but even shops. It brings people to certain parts of town. They're not driving by at 50 miles an hour. They're actually looking in the stores and restaurants, so I'm very much looking forward to it.
And it's super safe. There's no vehicles, no motorized vehicles at all. So young kids who are just learning how to get on the bike, to older folks who, you know, need that little extra room to maneuver, they're able to participate.
Education involved. I'd like to move the item.
Thank you. There's a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agujianian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Garbetti?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I think that concludes our business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second. The special meeting is adjourned. I call to order the regular meeting of the Glendale City...